The work session of the Springfield City Commission is hereby called to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Mr. Rue is detained tonight, but he anticipates being here later in the meeting. Mr. Rue?
Maybe a different ward. Delayed, okay. I thought you said detained. I was blown away.
No, I don't think he's been detained. I think he's been delayed.
Received.
Mr. Manager?
Yes. Commission, tonight we have one work session item, and that is the Solid Waste District Annual Report. And with us are Chuck Bauer and Bonnie Martins to talk to us about the solid waste annual report and just about the Clark County Solid Waste District. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Is this on? Yep. So I would like to say thank you for having us. We are with the Clark County Solid Waste District. Kind of an overview of what I'm going to be talking about, the different programs that we have. I don't know why that red mark there. As well as some of the contracts that we have and just our overall programs, if you're not familiar with what a solid waste district is. Our mission, of course, is to ensure that all Clark County residents have and businesses have access to comprehensive solid waste services, which is essentially your trash service. Our director is Chuck Bauer, sitting beside me, and our goal is to provide education and assistance and support with not only waste programs but recycling and education as well. Most of 2024, because this is, of course, last year's plan and report, we every five years have to update a 15-year plan that then is approved by the Ohio EPA. The Solid Waste District is overseen by a policy committee of seven members, both related to commissions, large businesses, and residents. We have to get that plan approved from all of the political jurisdictions, at least 60% throughout the county. So the different townships, villages, et cetera. For our 20, for finishing up that plan, we ended up with a 94% approval rate of the updated plan. The Solid Waste District contracts with both the Sheriff Office and the Health Department. And what the sheriff contract involves with us on a daily basis is that we typically receive calls about items that have been dumped illegally. Mostly calls that have been about items that are alongside roads, in alleyways, blocking them, or that have been sitting on road sides, tires, mattresses, et cetera. Our deputies, in 2024, we had 341 of those calls, and that was up about 40 calls from the 2023 year. They do investigations. It doesn't necessarily mean the investigations are finding out who did it, if possible, and taking a course of action. And then a lot of times they do just pick up the items and then we get them either recycled and/or disposed of. Our two deputies by the truck there, when I talk about the calls of complaints that we get in, that lower photo kind of gives you an example of something that was dumped maybe in an alleyway or on the side of a road. Our deputies oversee a pride crew, which is inmates that have done minor infractions. And they use those for our community service program. They help remove the trash in the alleyways along the roads. They have, in 2024, collected just over 1,000 bags of trash between alleyways, township roads, et cetera. And then they do keep track of the inmates' hours that if they were paying someone to do all these cleanups, the just over 12,000, you know, service hours with the pride crew that they have, which is anywhere from four to about eight crew members. Our Health District supports the Solid Waste District's goals by and related specifically to the Solid Waste District as far as any of the trash trucks that come into the county are inspected by the Health Department, as well as making sure that the compost facilities are staying up to code. They do as well handle complaints and inspections, and sometimes we go back and forth on the different calls. They'll send calls to us, we send calls to them. And then with the scrap tires, they do the inspections of any businesses that sell tires and/or store them. And then what they're checking for is that those businesses are keeping up with fire lanes and spraying for mosquitoes, et cetera. So kind of a quick overview of the next part of the program. We have a specialty recycling program that happens weekly on Thursdays and that first Saturday of the month. We have six drop-off recycling locations. If you want to recycle, but either your curbside trash service doesn't offer it for where you live or the cost constraints don't allow you to recycle curbside. We have an education specialist that goes into classrooms and does public programs as well. And then we have some community programs that we are involved with annually. So as far as the recycling program goes, especially recycling, as I said, weekly on Thursdays and the first Saturday of each month. In 2024, we had just over 3,200 residents that paid to dispose of these items that you see. Electronics, household hazardous waste, which are your chemicals, herbicides, pesticides, pool chemicals, automotive fluids, et cetera. Cans of used paint that have been sitting in the garage. We have started allowing residents that, again, curbside trash service doesn't really allow for, say, a bulk item pickup, mattresses or chairs, couches, and they can bring those in. And we have a contract with CNS Tree Service. What that does in 2020, there were a little bit of an issue with residents bringing yard waste. They used to accept it for free. There were some constraints there. So the Solid Waste District created a contract with CNS Tree so that residents can take and municipalities can take yard waste to the facility for free. Somebody has a small amount, a bag or two, and they don't want to go out onto the potentially muddy area where residents can drop these, the yard waste at CNS Tree, they can bring it to us. And then we have a little bin that then we take once every couple weeks to CNS Tree. You can see the amount of tons that we collected, and most of these items have a small fee. Not necessarily what we pay to have electronics recycled and/or paint disposed of correctly, but we do offer some small fees for these items so that it offsets the costs a little. To the drop-off recycling, the six locations that we have, part of that plan that we turn into the Ohio EPA has each district reached a 25% goal for residential and commercial recycling to increase the longevity of the landfills. Currently, based on 2023 numbers, because we get Ohio EPA's numbers a year behind our numbers. So for 2023, we were at 37.2% diversion from landfills. Residents, as I said, can use these. The goal right now is to get everybody really to understand they are not places that trash can go. These are strictly for household recycling items such as your aluminum cans, bottles, newspaper magazines, cardboard, and then plastics, which can get a little tricky. Any resident can always give us a call if they're curious if something is or is not recyclable related to plastic. So as I said, Sam Perrin is our education specialist. He goes into the classrooms, kindergarten through 12th grade, although primarily he focuses kindergarten through probably 7th, 8th grade. He goes into the classrooms and builds on the programs so that kindergarten, he's reading a book by second grade. They're talking about and creating paper, so this kind of what looks green and orange. He has torn-up pieces of paper. Everyone in the classroom has a job to do, and they create this little piece of handmade paper. And then it just, he builds each year so that he's not doing the same second grade programs that when those second graders or third graders, they're like, oh, I saw this last year. So it really builds. He has reached in 2024 over 2,800 students and then visited 21 of the schools in Clark County, which is up from 16 the year before. The community programs that the Solid Waste District works to provide, we collaborate with Wittenberg University for their students getting into the community program. We get usually one to two interns per semester. We have a Facebook page through our Keep Clark County Beautiful Board. So if you want to find out both what keeps Clark County beautiful and our solid waste district programs are, you can find that through that Keep Clark County Beautiful Facebook page. We, through Keep Clark County Beautiful, do a Great American Cleanup each spring, March 20th through about June 20th. This is a program where we provide gloves and trash bags to any individuals, families, scout troops of any sort, 4-H groups, et cetera. And they can clean up around their neighborhood, along the like school programs will do that as well. And then any public right-of-way, so our parks, our bike paths, where the scout troops or 4-H groups might meet, they clean up around that particular church or school where they meet. We also, around Earth Day, offer a downtown cleanup of downtown Springfield. And in 2024, we had the 58 volunteers picking up 55 bags of litter throughout this 40 kind of core block of downtown Springfield. And our Keep Clark County Beautiful Board members helped to plant mums last fall, and we'll be doing that again in September. We also have our own Adopt a Spot program where we pick up litter along a section of bike path that we had board members help and pick up about that, eight bags of litter last year. Two new programs in 2024 are our Make Clark County a Little Bit Better. We are trying to connect with businesses throughout Clark County, not just Springfield, but throughout the county. Again, to kind of clean up along where the businesses are. We would show up with a staff member who then brings these litter pickup supplies, grabbers, trash bags, gloves, and we clean up along the road or around two or three blocks of where the business is of litter. Then we actually bring all that litter back unless, of course, there's a dumpster or trash service that they can put the one or two bags of litter from that cleanup into. Otherwise, we bring it back with us even, and it just requires about an hour of that business's staff time. We also applied for a grant to make recycling at the larger kind of food truck recycling events more handy. Instead of renting a, or, well, yeah, basically renting a roll-off or recycling, we deliver it, we talk to the people and make sure that the recycling either clear streams, say, at the Summer Arts Festival, or recently, as in the Jazz Fest and our food truck competition. Summer Arts Festival tends to have the clearstream frames in that bottom photo, and then the hard-sided black and blue containers are at more of the weekend events so that they don't blow over quite as much. And we actually have built on that program from 2024 this year. So if you do have any questions, either myself or Chuck can answer them. Again, I'm the program manager, and our website is the32trash. And we are located on that 1602 West Main Street. For our office buildings, that's the one with the mural, and then next door, 1620 is where that specialty recycling.
Thank you, Bonnie. Questions from members of the commission?
I don't really have a question, but I wanted to say thank you. This is just wonderful news. And just love to hear that you guys are partnering with Springfield City Schools. And I got super excited when I saw Ms. Cottle, who is a wonderful veteran teacher, on the screen. So I just truly appreciate the work that you guys do to beautify the county. Thank you.
Also, I want to thank you for the work you do. I'm fortunate enough to serve a couple committees with you and go out and pick up some trash a few times a year. I also want to thank the pride participants that work to keep the city clean as well. Can you clarify a little bit more on what enforcement looks like? And then the second thing I'm going to ask is, we get asked all the time about volunteers. And what is the best way to direct volunteers to you?
Well, as far as the two sheriff deputies, I mean, really, I'd kind of like to say that if somebody has dumped a tire or a mattress in an alleyway or side of the road, they don't usually say "belongs to" with their phone number and address. However, they do investigate if bags of trash are left. They try to see maybe where it came from, especially if it's a repeat area. They do try to discover who left it and either contact them. They have actually taken the bags of litter back to whoever it was that dumped it and said this is not an appropriate way to dispose of it. It can be tricky to get them actually charged in a court, but that would be the next step. As far as volunteers go, our-
Yeah, I guess. So volunteers are, you're talking more about volunteers that may want to help clean up the city or their neighborhoods? So certainly contacting us or Bonnie at 2020 and just say, hey, what can we do to clean up? We're more than willing to coordinate and help them have supplies to go out and explain to anyone that would like to do that how it can be done. So we support that all year round, but the focus would be Great American Cleanup when we really shine a light on, this is springtime, it's a program that Keep Clark County Beautiful affiliate helps us organize as a community. So we definitely center it around there, but any time of year, we'd be happy to take volunteers. So we have Adopt a Spot programs that would also kind of fit into that where people may want to regularly clean up a particular area of a roadway, put up signs for that to acknowledge that they are doing that work. So there's some other programs about related to volunteers.
I would say the biggest thing about the Great American Cleanup is that through a donation from Rumkey, we have four locations, New Carlisle, Moorfield Township. There's a container that is in basically downtown Springfield where if the area that you cleaned up doesn't really have a place that you can put the bag or two of litter, you can take it to one of these four locations where Rumkey has this bin. Outside of that March through June program, it really falls on the cleanup crew that's doing the cleaning up the park or around their church or neighborhood to just divide the bags of trash between the neighbors. Or again, if it's a church group, that they put it in the church receptacle, whether it's a, you know, individual like roller cans or a dumpster. That's the tricky part outside of that. If it really came down to it, you know, we can help with that. But generally, we ask the cleanup volunteers to put it in the container that they're helping in that area.
Commenting a couple of questions. I was so pleased that you've now are recycling styrofoam packing materials.
Yeah, I did.
I went out two weeks ago and the dumpster was full. I had to come back on a Thursday. But tell us a little about that, because not food containers, as an example, cannot be recycled by and large.
No, the styrofoam program that we have is for that electronics, white, pre-shaped, non-bendy material. If you get medicines or meat shipped to you in those styrofoam coolers, it's that type of styrofoam, not housing insulation, that green or colored foams. We can and do get those recycled. We have a densifier that through a different grant allows us to break it down into smaller amounts that then we take, and it does get recycled down in Mason, Ohio.
The other thing that I know you have available is your cleanup trailer. And tell us a little about what's in it and then how an organization or a person can work with you to use the trailer.
So if a neighborhood group wanted to get together, they don't necessarily have shovels, wheelbarrows, mowers, trimmers, et cetera.
All of those things are in the trailer.
They're in the trailer, and we also include, of course, gloves, trash bags, vests. You can't really say, I don't like my neighbor's yard. We are going to get together as a neighborhood and clean up my neighbor's yard. It has to be a group, you know, working together to clean up an entire neighborhood. And we ask that at least five adults be participating in this. And then we deliver the trailer and on typically a Friday and pick it up on a Monday. And then that neighborhood or church group, you know, because the church might not have access to all of that and, you know, they want to do a cleanup of their property or something like that. So that can be rented essentially free of charge. We ask for a deposit only so that we know everything comes back with it, so.
And would you make that trailer or its contents available to the businesses? You talked about working with businesses to pick up around their particular business.
The requirements are, like Bonnie said, you know, we wanted to have five adults. So we know we have a group of people that are using it. It's not designed for just an individual to use at their home. So that's the intent of the program, but absolutely we would encourage that.
Well, as Commissioner Brown said, keep up the good work. And as Commissioner Tackett said, I've noticed the community, because I've been out on some of those litter pickups, by and large, we're getting a little cleaner. It's taken us a while, and it's not something any one group can do, but by working together, again, we can get a lot accomplished in keeping our community safe and clean. So thank you for your effort.
Any questions about recycling? Just give us a call.
Thank you. Thanks for doing such a great job. Your motion to conclude the informal session? It's been moved in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Rue?
Yes. We have four public hearings before we begin the formal meeting. So we'll begin with the public hearing scheduled for 6:40. As proper legal notice, excuse me, it's scheduled for 6:40. Go ahead and clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Has proper legal notice been given for this hearing?
Notice of a public hearing to consider the application of codified ordinance section 1126.05E of the city zoning code to a proposed annexation area commonly known as the Granada Drive annexation area, consisting of approximately 33.951 acres, now located in Moorfield Township, which annexation shall be considered by the city commission on the date first above written, was published in the Springfield News-Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. Attached here too is a true and correct copy of the legal notice published on July 25th, 2025.
I move that to communication. Be ordered, received, recorded, in the minutes, and filed.
Okay.
It's been moved in second. Clerk, roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Staff report, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'll go over the zoning and the platine regulations. The parcels shown on slide are requested to be annexed into the city. The current zoning district is Moorfield Township. The current zoning district is Moorfield Township R1. Upon annexation, these will be assigned City RLD, Low Density Residential District, which allow for single-family uses and duplexes under certain conditions. And these parcels are not within the floodplain and would not need floodplain development permit in the future. Thank you.
Questions from commissioners? Dr. Estrada?
Have you received any objections in terms of this item?
I am not sure, but the city clerk would receive any if there were any.
Just the previous questions that we've had, mission meeting.
My understanding is that the only exit and entrance to the property will be off Route 4. Is that correct?
I know the developer also owns property located off of Route 4 to provide ingress egress into the site. They have talked or have discussions with the township trustees as it relates to Granada Drive, because that's a township road and would require them to grant access. But I believe the developer plans to build towards that east side of the development, using that Route 4 side as the primary to start.
As I recall, that was one of the major concerns of some of the current residents of the area.
Yes, that is correct. That access point and then also making sure that it was low-density residential, which is what the zoning classification will be.
Thank you very much.
Are there other comments from commissioners? Comments from the audience on the hearing? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close this hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. A clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Public hearing scheduled for 6:45 is called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Dr. Estrada?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Proper legal notice being given for this hearing?
Only has actually one or two hearings, so she's juggling four readings, so no worries.
Here we go. Notice of a public hearing for the purpose of considering the proposed change in zoning for 3.47 acres located at 341 West Lefalane, being parcel number 3050700032100033, from Springfield Township I-2 General Industrial District to City CHC Heavy Commercial Corridor District, was published in the Springfield News-Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. Attached here too is a true and correct copy of the legal notice published on July 25th, 2025.
I move that to communication be ordered, received, recorded in the minutes and filed.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. A clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Staff report, please.
The applicant is requesting to rezone subject parcel to City CHC District to build a hotel. The parcel was annexed in 2001 and had retained its township zoning district. As city cannot administer township zoning, it was recommended to rezone subject parcel to a city zoning district. The parcel currently has a parking lot fronting East Lefalane and majority of it is undeveloped. Clark County Comprehensive Plan shows this to be industrial area and envisions this to be developed for office or commercial uses. The proposed zoning district, CHC, will complement the surroundings as it permits for commercial uses, including a hotel use. East Lefalane is classified as 100 feet wide primary arterial public right-of-way by the Clark County Thoroughfare Plan. Return reports from city staff state no objections and recommends approval of applicant's request. City Planning and Zoning Division has commented that the overall staff recommendation is approval of applicant's request. The site and building plan will have to be reviewed for compliance through planned review process. The owner will need to, or a developer will need to check site for any easements and utilities prior to construction. Applicant's request was also recommended approval by SIDA Regional Planning Commission. Thank you.
Excellent. Other comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrada?
Have you had any complaints or objections relative to this proposal?
No complaints or objections so far.
Thank you.
Other comments from the audience on this hearing only? Hearing none. Clerk call the roll. Or is there a motion to conclude this hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. A clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. The public hearing scheduled for 6:50 is called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrada?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Proper legal notice being given for this hearing?
Notice of a public hearing for the purpose of considering the proposed change in zoning for 0.037 acres located at 1010 North Murray Street, from RHD High Density Residential District to CNC Neighborhood Commercial District, was published in the Springfield News-Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. Attached here too is a true and correct copy of the legal notice published on July 25th, 2025.
I move that to communication be ordered, received, recorded in the minutes and filed.
Second.
It's been moved in second. A clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown? Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Staff report, please.
Applicant wishes to rezone the subject parcel as shown on slide from High Density Residential to Neighborhood Commercial District, and a restaurant use is proposed at this location. There is a structure on site which was built in 1928. In the 1950s, there was a grocery retail store at this location. 2002 and 2013 records show hair and beauty salon use. The use of property as a beauty salon is legal non-conforming and can continue for the same use. Any change in use will need to conform to current high-density residential requirements. The current zoning allows for a mix of housing types and residential uses. A home occupation use that does not have walk-in customers is permitted in this zoning district. The owner's proposed CNC district proposes to establish a cafe, which will have walk-in customers and provide seating. A cafe use is included under a restaurant use per zoning code. Zoning map of 1975 shows the subject parcel was zoned as R2, Two Family Residence District. Clark County Comprehensive Plan shows this area as traditional neighborhood high intensity. The future of neighborhood is to have a mix of residential uses and small-scale office and retail. A sit-down restaurant or cafe use is not envisioned for this neighborhood per the Comprehensive Plan. North Murray Street is classified as local road by Clark County Thoroughfare Plan. There is a 16 feet wide public alley running east-west of the parcel. Return reports from city staff. City Service Center recommends approval, commenting that change to commercial use requires installation of backflow prevention device per chapter 913 of codified ordinances. Applicant will have to work with service center for information on backflow prevention devices. City Fire Department commented that any change in occupancy status will need to comply with Ohio Fire Code and Springfield Fire Protection Ordinances. City Building Division recommends approval, commenting that the applicant has applied for Certificate of Occupancy for Business Establishment to serve coffee and snack. A restaurant is classified as Use Group A2 with special cooking equipment and safeguards established. If they are claiming a restaurant, the certificate of occupancy applied for may not be correctly addressed. The applicant will have to work with Building Division if they wish to make changes or have questions about the certificate. City Planning and Zoning Division recommends denial. The zoning map of 1975 shows area was primary for residential uses. Clark County Comprehensive Plan does not envision this area to be for commercial or restaurant use. The long-term vision for traditional neighborhoods was a mix of residential uses and neighborhood-scale non-residential uses, such as institutional, civic, small-scale office and retail. The property is surrounded by residential high-density zones, and the current RHD district allows for other non-residential uses, but they are limited to religious land use, community center, and home offices that do not permit for walk-in customers. The proposed CNC district does not meet the intent of serving as a mixed-use transitional area between high-intensity central business district uses and low-density residential uses. As it does not complement surroundings and it is the only property requested to be of commercial in nature, it is considered spot zoning and not recommended. A restaurant use is a limited use in the proposed CNC zoning district. If approved by city commission, the proposed use of restaurant will have to comply with some of the other zoning code requirements. It will be the owner's responsibility to locate any utility easements prior to making changes to this parcel. There is no required parking minimums, but the proposed restaurant use will have to adjust customer parking with available street parking options. So the overall staff recommendation is denial of applicant's request. Applicant's request was recommended approval by the city planning board. Thank you.
So, point of clarity, so this building, I wish we had a front. Do you have a front picture of the building?
Yes.
This building is an existing commercial-style building within a legacy, one of our many legacy neighborhoods in the community, correct?
Yes.
And so there was businesses on this street. I'm familiar with this street. I think there was another business down the street on the left also. So I would be, I would be inclined to support this because I've also talked to the people that have a vision for this building and they want to kind of revitalize this. And we've seen a few other neighborhood restaurants pop up that have done this over on Ludlow area. So I'm definitely inclined to support this. But thank you for the information. Dr. Estrada?
To your point, Mayor Rue, given that this is already an existing commercial building, I do find myself wanting to support this. We heard from several people when we were planning for development in the community that they wanted to see some expansion in neighborhood of some small businesses. This seems to be a perfect opportunity to do that as opposed to, for instance, maybe a house. This is already what looked like was or is a commercial building, and that, in my view, makes all the difference in the world. Did you have any objections or complaint before the meeting tonight?
There were concerns from neighbors on parking for the proposed use, which were shared by staff at the planning board meeting.
Thank you very much.
So where is this building in proximity to Cecil in Lime, the restaurant?
Yeah, probably five or six blocks east of that location.
Okay, so it's like down into the neighborhood. Can we go back to the, to that picture without the yellow, please? Thank you. So there's no major street?
Just north of northern there would be McCright.
Okay, okay. So I drive through there all the time because Lagonda is one of my buildings, right? And there is, the parking is very tight. So I'm wondering, so my initial thoughts were, so what's the difference between this location and a Cecil in Lime? You know, and with the parking, what's the difference between this and a Ludlow? You know, so I'm just wondering. I'm trying to, I'm basically trying to envision, is that the impact is because there's not a main road that is feeding directly to there to access that, you know, like High Street or?
You asked specifically about, or referenced Cecil in Lime. Cecil in Lime does have its own off-street parking lot.
Right.
On Ludlow, you're referring to Speakeasy Ramen.
Yeah.
I do not believe they actually have off-site parking of their own. So they are a neighborhood. And I would say it's actually a little further south of High Street than what this would be from McCright. And, and understand, so staff does want to be very cautious about spot zoning in cases of neighborhoods. But as we know, in our legacy neighborhoods, there's a lot of buildings that were commercial uses because we have a lot of legacy, blue-collar neighborhoods that had mom-and-pop shops. And so we do feel we should stay consistent as staff when it relates to recommending approval or denial on spot zoning. And in this case, allow the plan board and then ultimately the city commission to make those individual decisions on, on cases like this.
Can you think of any properties around there that they could convert into parking? You know, sort of like Crazy Tacos did on Belmont? Just off the top of your head, either of you?
I'm not aware of if there's any vacant lots in that surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you.
There any comments from the audience? If you'd like to go to the microphone, please, Darlene.
I just like the stress, the importance, like Crystal said about the parking. My son lives on Lexington, and I think it's the Speakeasy Ramen you were talking about. All the residents around there have problems parking in front of their homes and things because of the customers that use that restaurant. So there, that can be a major problem for the resident.
Other comments from the audience? Hearing none. Is there a motion to conclude this?
Rob, there is one.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Dwat Love. One of the partners for this proposed rezoning, Culture Cafe, as we call it. One of the things that attracted us to this particular building that has been empty for almost a year. Of course, it was said it was a beauty shop before that. We think this space is wonderful, wonderful for the neighborhood. It would be an addition to the neighborhood. It is close to McCright, but the neighbors, we have been actively involved in the neighborhood already. You talk about parking on the street. If you come out and look at it, if you know how the houses are faced, the houses that are faced the actual North Murray Street, there's only about two or three houses that parking would face. Everyone else's houses actually face north. So there really is no one that really parks on that street for about a block, right? So we would love the support. We want to continue to support the economic growth of our city, and we believe this would be a great addition to the city. Thank you.
I have a question for you. So can you describe what type of restaurant?
Culture Cafe, I'm glad you asked. Thank you. Culture Cafe, we, our goal is to, to offer specialty coffee, coffee from East Africa in particular, coffee and teas. And our goal is to support the local baker industry here in Springfield by serving local pastries.
So, so point of clarity then, you're probably looking at, I don't know, yeah, a lot of turnover, 10 people inside, 20 employees.
Right, not under 20 square feet.
You have to tell your employees not to park on the street, pretty much, is what I'm seeing.
They gotta walk to work.
Yeah, but this is.
That makes a major difference, right?
Yeah, it does.
Because that turnover, that's huge. Thank you for coming to the mic and explaining.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all. Thank y'all for being here.
Any other comments from the audience? Is there a motion to conclude this hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. A clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. The public hearing scheduled for 6:55 is called to order. Clerk call the roll. Yes, the public hearing scheduled for six fifty-five is called to order, clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrada?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Has proper legal notice been given for this hearing?
Notice of a public hearing for the purpose of considering the proposed change in zoning for point one zero seven acres located at nine nineteen Broadway Street from RLD Low Density Residential District to CNC Neighborhood Commercial District was published in the Springfield New Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. Attached Tier Two is a true and correct copy of the legal notice published on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
I move that the communication be ordered received, recorded in the minutes and filed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes, staff report.
Applicant here wishes to rezone the subject parcel from Low Density Residence District to Neighborhood Commercial District. Subject parcel has had a house since nineteen hundred. The current zoning of RLD does not allow for small-scale retail or business uses. Applicant wishes to house a tenant who will live on the upper floor and have a business hair salon on first floor. The use under proposed CNC Neighborhood Commercial District is considered as a live-work dwelling. And the parcel was part of a subdivision plat and was zoned R1C, single-family residence district since nineteen seventy-five. The Clark County Comprehensive Plan shows the future character area as traditional neighborhood low intensity. The proposed district of CNC does not align with future character of area and will not complement the surroundings as all parcels are zoned RLD residential low density. Broadway Street is classified as local road by Clark County Thoroughfare Plan. There is a fourteen-feet-wide public alley to the west of this parcel and a twenty-feet-wide alley to the south of the parcel. Return reports from city staff. City manager's office has recommended denial, commenting that this use will create parking issues on street for current residents. City Service Center recommends approval, commenting that owner must install backflow prevention device per chapter nine thirteen of qualified ordinances. City Building Division recommends approval, commenting that applicant will need to submit plans for commercial permit, alteration, remodel of salon area, electrical for equipment requirements, HVAC for required ventilation in salons. City Code Compliance Division has recommended approval, commenting that code compliance has an active exterior case at this location. Orders were issued to the owner on November last year. The owner has begun making repairs to the property. The last phase of repairs will include installation of new windows, siding, fascia and guttering. No objections, however, there are concerns with parking. City Planning and Zoning Division recommends denial. The zoning district proposed does not align with the future vision for the neighborhood. The neighborhood was planted for single-family uses. The current zoning, RLD, allows for less intense home occupation, home office uses, which will not create on-street parking issues. The overall staff recommendation is denial of applicant's request. Applicant's request was recommended approval by city planning board. Thank you.
Comments from commissioners, Dr. Estrada?
Do you happen to have pictures of this property also that we could see? So this is pretty much a traditional home, or was?
Yeah, well.
It was. Did you have any objections or complaints prior to this meeting?
There was a call from a neighbor expressing concerns on parking, increased traffic due to proposed business and safety, pedestrian safety issues, and this caller was not in favor of the proposal.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone here that can speak to, uh, I would like to hear from you?
Uh, as far as parking goes, I actually own both. The proposed parking.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I apologize. Um, so it's actually a double lot, it shows on there only nine nineteen, but nine nineteen, eight, it's nine nineteen. So it's actually both of those, uh, both of those parcels, the whole entire red line. So the entire rear section.
I hate to interrupt you one more time, but we need you to come in and stay in for us. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, so the, i- it's actually not just the singular rectangle, it's gonna be that entire, uh, red rectangle that you see there above the property. Yeah. So the back half of that property is actually gonna be off-street parking. So you'll be able to access it through both alleyways. And, uh, we also have a plan to, uh, improve the alleyways because basically right now nobody's taking care of it. But, uh, the plumbing, electric, AC and floor plan changes have already been approved and permitted on the property. We're literally just standing by, waiting for the go-ahead. As far as the idea for it is, uh, to, to honestly, it's to fix the, a personal relationship. Um, lady's been cutting her hair for ten years. Yeah, both kids are out of the house, she's looking to downsize. Trying to like give her a place where she can literally just go downstairs and work. Um, not gonna be foot traffic, gonna be appointment only. Uh, the most so ever being there is four chairs. And the way I've set it up with floor plan and the permitting is when she's done, you add an interior door and it'll go back to being a stacked duplex like it was originally.
I have a, okay. My, my only, my only concern is this is a house. Looked like a house, this is a house in the neighborhood. And, uh, and you, granted though, you have a lot more lot around you and that's something to consider for sure, but this is taking a house train to business and it's also if this business doesn't go, somebody else will come in and actually put a brand-new business on this property if it's zoned in this way is a concern. Not saying, I'm just saying this is, these are two concerns, you have a, a answer to the off-street parking. Um, so, thanks for clarifying some things.
So, did, but didn't he say? Didn't you say that there was some sort of clause in which if so, if she was to leave that property, you, you would force, be forced to go back?
Um, no, no ma'am, I was just pointing to.
You just pointed that out.
The, the layout, uh, that we actually designed and submitted.
Mm-hmm.
It will function as a, an actual residential unit on the bottom floor.
Just zoned as a commercial property.
Correct, she'll, she'll just cut hair down there until she doesn't want to anymore and we'll go back and rezone. Resident.
Is that you saying that you would do that?
Uh, yes ma'am, I'm literally only doing this because she asked me to.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion to conclude this hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Is there, go ahead, just a minute?
Um, I actually didn't even know this was a thing that was gonna be brought up.
Just state your name publicly for me.
Melissa Skinner.
Thank you.
And, um, I am from that neighborhood and I would be totally opposed to a business going in the middle of our neighborhoods in that area. Um, because of the amount of traffic, if you drive through there now, there is not any open parking. I can't imagine taking all that grass on the backside, even though that house does need some repairs and fixed up, it's had multiple people moved in and out of it. Um, but having a business right there, I mean, there's lots of kids in that neighborhood, there's just a disaster waiting to happen with even more traffic coming in, even for a business, I can't imagine, so. Um, definitely would, had I gotten something in the mail, I would have definitely said I opposed to it, for sure. And I'm all about businesses growing in our city, I don't have a problem with that, but that's not a good spot for a business.
Sometimes the original purpose and the first purpose of a rezoned area like this is fine. And then ten, fifteen, twenty years later, it's done, somebody else comes in and puts a grocery store in there and makes it, uh, a ver, a nuisance. So, the original idea is usually not a nuisance, the future idea could be. So that's, that's also a concern when we're, when we're weighing these decisions. Thank you, sir. Your name?
My name is James Babiac.
Thank you.
I own the house at nine sixteen Cedar Street, which is in a block away. You have Cedar and then you have, if you're going north, Broadway. Okay, you can see the alleyways there, okay, which I call them hard pack. Everybody parks on the street, okay, on both Cedar and on Broadway. Kids play in streets, whether we like it or not, they do. You don't believe it, go down Cedar Street and you'll see basketball hoop and they play. My, so that you know that this building is in the middle of a block. It is not near a corner, so you're gonna have to drive. Person said there would be four seats or four chairs in this commercial establishment. That means probably every fifteen minutes a person is coming in, maybe double. You got all these cars coming in, there's no commercial businesses around that proposed change. And he talks about parking, well, you know, to get from one side of the street to the other, what do you go through? There are alleyways on both sides. If he goes halfway, let's assume he puts in a proposed parking lot halfway with blacktop. Well, if they wanna get out and go the other way, they're gonna run through that hard pack. What do you think they're gonna do to the rest of the road there on both sides? What about the kids? This does not make any sense. It should not be allowed. Uh, this kind of traffic would be detrimental for parking of all the other people. Because if I was coming to a business and there's parking right in front, why would I go and, and park in whatever proposed parking lot he's planning? That don't make any sense either. I'm really concerned about it being overcrowded, like I said, there's no other businesses and kids are gonna be hurt if you approve this. Do not approve this. Thank you.
So just, uh, so everybody understands this will go into a first reading tonight, we will not vote to change this tonight, this will be a vote in two weeks, whether it's approved or denied. Just so, just so you know, so what happens tonight is there's no vote tonight for it, but I appreciate your input.
So then I gotta come back again?
It's always, things like this are always read and then they're voted on in two weeks, unless it's an emergency ordinance. Thank you. Thank you for your input, thank you for your input. Do you mind if another point? Go ahead.
So with the zoning application, I did provide, uh, precedence that this has happened within six blocks last few years. This exact area.
Yep. Thank you. Is there a motion to conclude the hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Okay, the formal meeting for city commission's called to order, clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrada?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here, please stand for the invocation and the pledge. Father, just thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, be here with the community. We ask that you, uh, bring peace over our community, increase peace in all areas. Just ask you be with, uh, citizens tonight. Amen. Is there a motion for approval minutes?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. City Commission remains committed to creating a conducive environment for constructive and productive dialogue, engagement and engagement for our community. Those wishing to speak tonight fills out a comment card and provides their name and address for the record. Station, issued ID and driver's license must be provided when filling out the card and only those residing in Springfield and Clark County will be permitted to speak during the public comment period. Comment cards will be accepted up to fifteen minutes after the start of the formal legislative meeting. Those who are determined to have provided false information on the card will not be permitted to speak at this meeting or the next regularly scheduled meeting. We're truly committed to take, making this meeting an environment where people have the opportunity to share their ideas, thoughts and concerns. The commissioners and the staff are listening, we're taking notes and reaching, researching information relative to each of your comments. While honoring First Amendment principles, the city commission reserves a right to regulate the time, place and manner of public comments to ensure the proceedings remain orderly, respectful and conducive to constructive dialogue. While we fully respect the First Amendment rights of all individuals, disruptions of any, uh, or any conduct that impedes the orderly progress of the meeting will not be tolerated. Should any individual be escorted or asked to leave due to disruptive behavior on three separate occasions, I'll be notified that they're considered trespassed and barred from attending future city commission meetings. After the public comment period, city commissioners will respond to matters brought forth during the public comment period and will also direct the city manager and staff to answer questions posed during the public comment period. If any question asked requires additional research, the city manager and the staff will follow up with the individual in the next several business days and will post those answers on our website. I'd like Darlene Yearley, uh, to speak first, thank you. Yearley.
Evening, um, I want you to look at this booklet, it's a pamphlet from United Senior Citizens. This is for August and September of everything they offer, well, not everything, but a lot of what they offer for fifteen dollars a year. Um, I served in a jury trial last week of a seventeen-year-old being tried as an adult because of the severity of the charges. He and all three of his accomplices were in possession of a gun. I learned what a Glock looks like, the block switch, which makes a gun perform as an automatic that when the trigger's held will fire constantly at a rapid speed. And what a drum is, that when added to the gun, can hold up to fifty bullets. I saw a video of a young man in the backseat of a car, taking a video inside the car, showing the defendant and himself, he had a gun in his lap. They planned two armed home invasions, there were children in both homes. The seventeen-year-old was found guilty on all charges, which were several. The verdict was solidified when an audio tape was played from the jail from the previous night that the incarcerated seventeen-year-old made and forgot was being taped about another inmate he called a stooge and other names that testified on his guilt. He made a comment about a gun being held to the head of a stooge's young child's head. I don't know what the sentence was for this young person, but I know he'll probably be spending over twenty years in prison, being educated by prisoners much older than him who made bad, bad decisions over and over. This is not an isolated case, we have many young people in possession of a firearm at this very moment. These teenagers should have been given the choice to be in a single facility modeled after USS, United Senior Citizens, that offered them hope out of hopeless situations, information on how to become productive citizens, sports that are included in the fifteen dollars a year, seminars with rewards for attending that include information on health, mental, emotional and physical self-care, cooking, self-reliance, how to keep a car running, how to manage finances, job opportunities, how to deal with relationships, a place that gives girls other options at young ages than to have babies they can't focus on raising, a place of security, responsibility and help with all the challenges a growing young person faces. We have many dedicated groups that try to change this outcome, but it's clear their approaches are not working. I finally have a meeting set up with Bernie Willis, Ohio House District Seventy-four representative. I want everyone to be aware of what I think this community needs to address this community's alarming problems of today that also affect the future. If we can help these senior citizens, we need to do something about our youth. And thank you Tracy for your support and encouragement.
Diana Daniels?
Good evening commissioners, good evening Mayor Rue. Been two years. Two years ago, was momentous occasion for the city and for myself and our band of merry malcontent. Our eyes were opened to the problems that we were facing. I didn't really know the depths until I spent the last two years investigating what was happening to our city, who was responsible, and why. It's sad to say that I, I think we're at this point, we're at, we've been at a crossroads. I've come to realize what you can do and what you can't do and what you could do. But you won't. And that's where I think that you have failed us. How many times have I stood here and asked for a meeting with the merry band of malcontents now minus one? To have some solutions and real talk about what we could do for the community, but has fallen on deaf ears. The purpose of government. There are many purposes, but the sole purpose that I think is the most important is the safety and security of the citizen. And citizens are the natural born people of this community. And in this regard, I think you have failed. In the last three months, there have been, what, how many buildings have been hit? You had the Dollar General. You've had Sunset Apartments. You've had Derote Apartments. You have had Bob Evans, which thank God we dodged a bullet on that one, that it was the kitchen through a major support beam of that building and not the front windows where patrons were eating. And just recently, we have had, yesterday, a, a car wash or was it a lube place that was hit? And then that very same day, another individual took out a trailer at Rural King and tried to run. Is that six? That's six, right? Let's do simple math. Those six incidents were by non-citizens. If those non-citizens had not been behind the wheel, how many incidents would we have? The answer is zero. I think you need to rethink what's going on. Thank you.
Kenneth R. Sealeague, Jr.
Guys, thanks for having me. I noticed a couple of things on the agenda that, and I know we're not there and you're gonna open it up, put us in comments. I just, I just want to get my questions on the record and if I can get them answered later. I understand what CD BG, uh, means. It slipped my mind for a minute, the Community Development Block Grant that they're gonna talk about tonight in reference to several things on the agenda. Uh, I just, I, I would like to go on the record saying, hey, what, what is that? Is that federal funding, state funding, city funding? If you don't spend the eighty-nine, one, the twenty-nine, the twenty-five that are mentioned in these three, does that money go away? Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm curious. The Uh, I was here a couple of weeks ago, you guys all remember, and we talked about the not if, but when winter comes, because it's coming. And to deal with the homeless issue. Two weeks came and went. I haven't heard a peep from anybody up there. Or a lot from people, you know, called and said, hey, good for that, let's do something. So what I would like to propose tonight publicly is that you open this forum up uh, on a day, let's get together and figure it out. And let's get everybody that's in the business or claims to be in the business of helping the homelessness. And let's all meet down here and let's do something constructive so this guy doesn't have to fly by the seat of my pants again this year, keep people from freezing to death. And, uh, I would like to, I would like to do that. Let's do it in this forum, in this forum. Great place for it. Let's get all these people together and just cut through the, all the red tape and the promises and, you know, we're gonna do this, we do this, but, you know, we can't do that. Let's cut through all that and let's have a definitive plan, even if that means that I have to spend ninety days around the clock at church right up the street here providing what I do. I can tell you that this year, if I have to do it again, I have to do it different. I have to have a paid staff. I cannot expect volunteers to do what they did last year. Now, I'm very appreciative of it. I'm very appreciative of, you know, the two from the panel up here that did, the mayor and Tracy, you came by, what do you need? You know, you worked with me, uh, and all that stuff, but we can't, we can't fly by the seat of our pants. We're going to, and it's gonna be worse this winter. Uh, it's gonna be worse this winter. Trust and believe that. And, uh, I'm out there every day feeding them. And yep, they ran them out of Snyder Park. They're traveling. They're traveling. Uh. Ah, I mean, anyway, so if you would answer that.
Thank you, Baron. Appreciate you.
We could do it.
Melissa Skinner?
Thank you, Commissioner. I haven't been here for quite a while, so I do have quite a few concerns or questions that I'd like to have some answers to. Um, can we hear from union reps on the charter that's going on the ballot, I believe is what you guys called it for the police and fire? On what maybe their thoughts are? Um, what this charter is gonna do for the officers in each division? I'm not a hundred percent clear on what they're asking us to vote on in November. Or is there a number we can call and ask their thoughts and is there a copy of what this is all about? Um, the next thing is, um, to figure out, um, the jail, um, they want to have it built, but now I'm hearing they're calling it a public safety complex. People are already taxed to death. What is the true plan for this? What changes internally can we do through fines or violations that can help fund this versus taxing the people? Um, I'm wondering with all the new apartment buildings and developments around the city being built, which ones, or if any, have been, been given tax abatements and if they have, why? Um. Is there a report that can be given to tell us how many wrecks this year have been young adults between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one this year? And can we get a report on how many wrecks or accidents just from Haitian drivers? Um, I'm wondering if it's true about what I read this week that there was a woman who lost control of her car and went up into somebody's yard, up an embankment in a hill into their driveway while knocking out a kid's library stand because they were practicing driving. Um, they went before the magistrate, was only fined a hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um. And was said that they had a fake Florida license. I'm just wondering how can this be? Um, how are our businesses and residents that are being damaged getting compensation? And what are we doing to make our roads safer because they're not safer? Um, lastly would be the homeless situation we have. Last year we had issues and Baron opened up a center. Last meeting, they were asked what was the plan for this year as old weather's coming? And the answer, um, that was given truly wasn't a good answer. There wasn't a plan. There wasn't, this is sort of where we are. Feel like we sort of went around a tree on what was said. So I agree, Baron. What is the plan? What is the plan for our homeless? Um, you can drive down Main Street. I did today while I was working and our city, it's sad. Um, we need to do better between the trash cleanup. It's terrible.
Thank you, Melissa. Wes Babian?
We need to do better.
Wes Babian?
My thanks to you, Mayor Rue and Commission for these moments to speak. Considering the circumstances, we're hearing a lot of them. Especially those regarding our immigrant neighbors that we find ourselves dealing with. Words about loving our neighbors are being expressed by many in our community. I have long ago learned that love is more than sentimentality or indulgence. It is a matter of careful intention, thought, and maturity. Certainly, love is deeply personal. However, I believe that there is such a thing as civic love. Defined as recognizing that we all do better when we are all committed to our common well-being. I see signs of civic love in the actions of our elect city township, county, and school board leaders and those who serve our city and townships and county, as well as our school administrators and teachers. The tasks are not always appreciated or easy, obviously. I have come to see that being willing to hear what is being said respectfully comes at a cost. Thank you for bearing that responsibility. However, as you know, much of the most important word of civic love for our neighbors comes in the decisions that are made in the aftermath of any public comments such as these this evening. Legislation that's passed that affects us all. Working through these decisions is the work of justice, civic love on behalf of all of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Banks?
Peace. Multiply. Many have celebrated, uh, the recently announced collaboration efforts between the city police and county sheriff departments, which is good, uh, is good stewardship of funds, ensuring efficiency of emergency services and reducing needless replication. Similarly, funds are being allocated, uh, for the jail, uh, and, and improvements. This too is good because if people are going to be incarcerated, the facilities need to be livable. However, neither of these are sufficient models for justice as justice is not simply the policing of poverty. Justice is the prevention of poverty. And I emphasize poverty because many of the crimes committed in our city are symptoms of scarcity resulting from long-term disinvestment, segregation, and pathologization, which is to say the assumption that poor or black or brown folks are inherently evil. Whether or not this describes our sentiment, our current budget reflects this to be our bureaucratic belief and communal consensus. Instead, may our budget reflect our shared values by proactively preventing the problems that lead to imprisonment. One example would be a line item reserved for Community Violence Intervention Program. The Bloomberg School of Public Health at Johns Hopkins University confirms what we already know. That those most directly impacted by gun violence reside in areas that have suffered from a legacy of racist or discriminatory public policies which create the conditions for violence. CVI programs reduce gun violence through employing credible community leaders who work with individuals involved in, in these problematic practices. Such leaders include coaches, pastors, as well as previously incarcerated and past gang members. CVI programs are most effective when a wide range of community stakeholders invest in efforts of empowerment over imprisonment. This means collaboration among grassroots organizations and well-established corporations. Such partnerships benefit the entire city as numbers of employable workers increase, housing values improve, educational support expands, and safety is shared by all. This is only one example of the imaginative and liberatory solutions that we need to consider as we proceed forward together. And it's this type of dreaming and organizing that the Amos Project is committed to. We hope to work beside others in making a better Springfield for all. Peace.
Thank you. Clara Copeland?
When I was growing up, my mother was a full-time mother. Even though she'd graduated from Washington University in, in, in St. Louis and taught school, she was at home raising children. She sewed all of my clothes. And so when I was married in nineteen sixty-five, I thought that's what I had to do, even though I taught full-time. So I did all the laundry. I did all the grocery shopping. I did all the cooking. I even got up ten minutes early so I could iron whatever we were gonna wear that day. Warren called those the good old days. Because then we moved to Chicago and the women's movement started. And it changed my life. And it changed his life and it changed our marriage. And as you know, we were married for fifty-eight and a half years and it was good. We were partners. Even though it did take him fourteen years to learn how to vacuum. And, um, I still don't have a dishwasher because I always said I was married to a man with dishpan hands. I am telling you all of this for a reason. In Springfield, Ohio, we have a chief of police who's a woman. That could not have happened when I was growing up. It could not have happened even at the beginning years of my marriage. But we are blessed with a woman, chief of police. And so I am saying to you and to you, when we refer to this young woman, we need to say chief. If you want to say her first name, then say Chief Elliot or Chief Allison. And if you go by her last name, then say Chief Elliot. But she has earned that title. And we all need to respect that and to respect her. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I broke.
That's all right. You don't have to make fun of her.
Thank you for that.
So we have some comments. Uh, Crystal's first comment was applause. Good job. So, um. I think I'll go reverse just, I know that's others' comments. Uh, the, the city commission itself, uh, did not have any participation in the decision to place a tax on the ballot for the jail. It's just not within our scope, okay? So we may or may not support it. I support it. Uh, but it is, uh, something that we did not decide to do. Uh, it is a need and it is, uh, you've already stated the good reasons to have him because it needs to be a condition that is not deplorable like it is right now for those that have to be there. So I encourage you to learn about it, uh, and learn about the jail and, uh, the tax and, uh, the, the need to have it. I know that, uh, our development department is looking at homeless, uh, homeless plan, uh, winter homeless plan. It's not being ignored. Uh, and just because we don't have an answer tonight for you doesn't mean it's not, there's not something happening. And I encourage you to talk offline and continue to push that. And I'm, I'd be fine with a, a meeting to discuss this. Um, I know that the staff members, the, the staff members need to be there to make it more effective than just a bunch of, uh, commissioners showing up because we'll hear what happens, whether we're there or not, but it's important that the staff's involved in that like they already are, okay? Um, hang, hang on.
I wanted to build on that.
Okay. I just.
In my report tonight. In my report tonight relative to federal and state cuts, the whole issue around the block grants. And in terms of your question, it is federal money exclusively that is doled out to local units of government. But it was not included in the president's budget initially. Zero out. No funding. The House Appropriations Committee at the federal level has put some back. The Senate at the federal level has put some back. But the numbers don't agree. And the pots they're going into are different. And of course, right now, both the House and the Senate are in recess. So nothing is happening. Because ultimately, they have to get together in DC and work out the differences between those two, assuming they can. So at this point, we don't know what or even if we will be receiving federal funding. Obviously, President Trump is gonna play a role in this. He made it very clear in his initial budget. No funding for this, this population. The Senate and the House have now chosen to disagree with him. The Senate and the House have now chosen to disagree with him. Now, we'll see how the politics all works out, but I want to encourage you, if you think, believe me, I do, we need that federal funding. This is not a burden we can carry by ourselves. I want to encourage you to write to President Trump. I want to encourage you to write to our senators and representatives because they are going to be making this decision on money. Not us. That decision is getting made in Washington. Now, in addition, we've also been told that in terms of the homeless population, that the administrative beliefs right now, the beliefs of the current administration are that everyone will be placed either in drug rehab, mental health rehab, or some kind of program. Now, I know for a fact, and you do too, that not everyone is going to be pleased with that direction from the federal government. Because we have some in our homeless community prefer to live outside. They like the freedom. But yet, I'm telling you what the administration has said to date is, we will favor those communities that have a place for everyone to go to, be it a shelter or a treatment center or jail. That's where we are with things, to my knowledge. And we are monitoring this very, very closely, almost daily. We hear where we are with this. And right now, with everything on recess, it's going nowhere. So if you want to make a difference, now is the time, I urge you, to contact people and let them know what your thinking is. Because they're about to make some, some decisions in DC that will impact this community and all communities across this nation. Thank you.
Okay. Melissa Skinner, you can call the union reps at the IFF 333 and also the different unions that are represented, and you're welcome to talk to them on your own. We will not create a forum. It's actually out of place for us to create a forum where the unions can come together and discuss this publicly. But we have spoken to them individually, can talk to manager's office, and there is a charter change available on the website.
On the website and I can also email that to you as well, the charter language. And we actually are required by our charter, anytime there's a proposed charter amendment, we actually have to mail what the proposed changes are to every registered voter, and that'll be happening in September.
We do not classify the car accidents by nationality, and so, this doesn't happen. So some of those statutes that you'd like to have are not available. And just for what it's worth, I think both Diane and your comment and others, I do not like to see any of the accidents that have happened. It, it makes me concerned like it makes all of you concerned. I believe things quieted pretty well for a while, and I would encourage the community leaders that have influence within the immigrant community to respeak the message to make sure you're driving safely. And it is also my knowledge that the immigrant drivers are doing everything they can to educate themselves, many more are than a year ago or two years ago. Many more are seeking insurance for their vehicles and driving with legal licenses. We can't control everybody, white, black, indifferent, no matter what nation, we cannot control the decisions they make. Nevertheless, we do want to encourage those. I don't want to see an uptick in, in accidents when I know that there was communication within the different communities to make sure that people had the opportunity to practice driving off the road and to get the, to understand what the, what the legal ramifications are. So I encourage that. And I don't like to see any crashes any more than any ballots does in this room. Not at all. Okay. So much more. Why don't you go ahead? And commissioners, you want to go ahead and speak before Brian does? Go ahead.
I do. I have a question actually, to piggyback off your saying, the question and statement you just made. So Brian, is there a way that we could get data to support that there are more individuals who are rolling in driver's education? I don't want us to say there are many more people and not know and have, be able to share that data with, with the citizen. Is that possible?
Yes, we certainly, we can reach out through the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, but we also, as we've seen this uptick, we plan on working again and coordinating with Director Wilson, Andy Wilson, from the Department of Public Safety, and asking them to help on the education piece, but also getting an understanding of what's happening through the Bureau of Motor Vehicles and, and alike. And certainly, we have increased our traffic efforts as well by adding additional staffing in the traffic unit, but also staffing overall, which has helped, but certainly just as concerning. And we want to make sure that we're providing the resources necessary so everybody can be, be safe.
Sure.
And so, we'll continue to work with the state, who ultimately governs the whole driver's license piece of it and, and have them help.
But I would love for, maybe somebody could come and do a work session or something just to inform us on what Rob was saying and back up what, what he shared with us. So I'd love to see the difference between that data, though.
I've talked to a few insurance agents just, and they're telling me how different immigrant individuals will come in to seek insurance, to make sure they're doing it right. So those are, that's what I'm sharing.
I did have a decrease in my renewal, so, in that. So that, I would love to see that data. So also, to Baron's point, I would like, wondering if we could meet with particular stakeholders and stakeholders, excuse me, who want to come in and bring their resources so we can pull resources together? Not necessarily an open town hall meeting where everybody's coming in and thinking, I'm thinking of a good way that we could use our time and use our resources and really come out with an action plan. So if you know some people that are really down for it, and if we've got, maybe Logan could come on board and we can say, okay, here's a plan, we've got these resources, we've got these resources, this is how we will allocate them over the winter. I think that would be a great idea. I'm just wondering if that would be a possibility.
Yeah, actually, just as an update, Commissioner, Logan is actually working and having those conversations, and they're trying to work to have a meeting similar to what was mentioned tonight. And so Logan will reach out to you tomorrow as well, Baron, but working with our partners like Nehemiah Salvation Army, Sheltered, and, and any of those that are involved in the comprehensive approach to homelessness. So she is working to help coordinate that. And again, would love your input and, and feedback in that as well.
And please, with your input, also put in your contacts. Remember to give her those people so she, they can be added to our call list, okay? Thank you.
I do want to commend in terms of the driver's education issue. I want to commend Governor DeWine. He put that in the state budget to bring back driver's education in the public schools. Some of you may not realize, we don't have driver education in the public schools anymore. It's all been privatized. And for some, the cost of private lessons is beyond their capacity as a family. So we have young people driving, who are either driving with no license and no insurance, and a good number of them driving with no formal training. They simply wait until they age out and can get their license without it. The General Assembly of this state would not accept the recommendation of the governor to fund driver's education. And we wonder why there are accidents in the state of Ohio? We're not training, we're not educating our young people and adults who are without license to drive safely. We've stopped it. The governor recognized the need. Andy Wilson stood in this very chamber, the Director of Public Safety for the state of Ohio, and said, "I recognize the need," but the General Assembly overruled the governor. I think that also needs to be addressed.
I'd like to just further expand on your comments, Mayor Ru, regarding the jail. There's been a lot of misinformation just in the past week circulating around in the community. And I just wanted to pass along, obviously, the city has no involvement in that levy. The county, that is all them. But I just wanted to share, if you go to the county's website, I don't know if a lot of people are aware, they have a ton of information about the jail, including the current conditions. And I actually just wanted to read just two sentences really quick, just to express the, the need for a new facility. So, I promise I'll make this quick, but it's important. As of August 13th, 2025, the inmate count was 220 after releasing, after releasing 22 individuals. That means the Clark County Jail is 32% over capacity. 79% of those individuals are male and 21 are female. There's also information about the history of the jail too. I don't know if everyone knows this current jail was a federal court order, so we were ordered to build a new jail and all of the inmates had to go to another county. If that happens again, it's gonna cost around $19 million that are, that's not included in the cost of the jail. So please go check out their website. There's been a lot of, of misinformation. There's a lot of good information on their website.
I think one of the only items left to address, the tax abatements that was asked about specifically, so the state of Ohio provides what is called a community reinvestment area, tax abatement for communities in Ohio to utilize, specifically focused on residential. So communities across Ohio use this tool to encourage and incentivize both renovation and new construction. And so the city is blanketed, about three-quarters of the city is covered by that for renovation and new construction of residential properties and receiving a tax abatement. If you'd like a full list, we can certainly provide you of those that have applied and have or are receiving a tax abatement currently within the city of Springfield, and that would come from my office. But again, this is a tool that the state of Ohio, the legislature has provided for communities like Springfield to help encourage and incentivize renovation and, and new housing in communities. And, and we want to take advantage, just like almost every other community in Ohio is doing, in the tools and resources provided to us from the state.
This is a comprehensive tool from our CRA reinvestment to different, you invest $15,000 in your house and, and you increase the value of it, you pay the original property tax for a while. And then to the apartment abatements and the different housing, you know, tax abatements, it, it is a tool that is used in a comprehensive way, not just in one specific area. I like that good, good term. Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? We're gonna move on to the business portion of our meeting. We'll go ahead and begin with first readings.
Accepting the application for annexation of certain territory containing 33.951 acres, more or less, in Moorfield Township and commonly known as the Granada Drive Annexation Area to the city of Springfield, Ohio. Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning 3.47 acres located at 341 West Luffel Lane, Springfield, Ohio, from Springfield Township I-2 General Industrial District to City CHC Heavy Commercial Corridor District. Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezonings 0.037 acres at 1010 North Murray Street, Springfield, Ohio, from RHD High Density Residential District to CNC Neighborhood Commercial District. Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning, oh, sorry, 0.107 acres at 919 Broadway Street, Springfield, Ohio, from RLD Low Density Residential District to CNC Neighborhood Commercial District. Authorizing the city manager, excuse me, authorizing the exercise of the city's option to renew the contract with Grumpet of Ohio Incorporated for trash pickup at various city facilities for an amount not to exceed $35,000. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient agreement with Sheltered, Inc. to provide CDBG funding for CDBG public services in an amount not to exceed $89,100. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient agreement with Nehemiah Foundation to provide CDBG funding for CDBG public services in an amount not to exceed $29,000. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient agreement with Aspire P-16 Collaborative Doing Business as Springfield Promise Neighborhood to provide CDBG funding for CDBG public services in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Springfield, Ohio, and the Board of Clark County Commissioners in connection with the Middle Urbana Road and St. Paris Pike Paving Project. Confirming and approving, applying for and accepting an EMS Priority One Training and Equipment Grant in an amount up to $2,915.48 from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Medical Services, to be used for the purchase of child transport systems for seven medic units and authorizing the city manager, finance director, law director, and the chief of the fire division to perform all acts, deposit all grant funds, and execute all documents they consider necessary to fulfill the city's obligations under said grant and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements.
Excellent. Okay, I have some comments on first readings. First off, just understand that the 13425, the annexation, is, this is again, a property owner that desires to annex the property into the city. We're required to look into this by law, and then if it is a property that can be annexed into the city, then we're required to basically pass it. And so, that's what we're going to be doing in the next meeting, is look at this, it's an annexation request from a private property owner. What happens to the property, how it's gonna be used is, is not on this commission, okay? This is just annexing it into the city, okay? Got that? And then I want to also, Baron asked about CBG funds, a good time to talk about that. And then I also want to know the grants that we're approving through CBG to the two organizations, Nehemiah and Springfield Promise.
Yes, Commissioner. So, so CDBG funds are the Community Development Block Grant, which are federal funds through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We are an entitlement community, so we receive an allotment every year from the federal government to be utilized specifically to carry out activities in low to moderate income areas or to impact low to moderate income individuals within our community. This specific, these three items, we put out a request for proposals for public services for the community, and so we received proposals. And then those proposals are reviewed by staff and then subsequently awarded based off of the, the proposal that's submitted and whether it warrants and the need and so forth. And so in this case, we are awarding three agreements. One was Sheltered, Inc. Again, as we know, Sheltered, Inc. is one of the homelessness providers in our community. This will help with some of the administration and operations of the services they provide. The next is the Nehemiah Foundation, and Nehemiah Foundation also again, created a program to help in assisting homelessness services. Many in the community know Aaron Roy, and Aaron Roy's position has helped funded through some of those funds on administration and operations there. And then the, the last one, which is the Aspire P-16 Doing Business as Springfield Promise Neighborhood, obviously Springfield Promise Neighborhood has been doing great work in our community for a number of years, and this is to help fund their family connection program, which works directly with our schools, to make sure that they're providing great services and, and helping those family connections that exist with our children and their families in our community. And so, CDBG Community Development Block Grant is a great program and great federal opportunity for communities like Springfield to be able to address a lot of the issues that we have in our community, and we have great organizations that again, have to go through a vetting process through an RFP and, and other procurement methods to make sure that they are utilizing the funds under the required regulations and rules set forth by the federal government.
Chris Trump?
Couple of questions.
Couple of questions. I think I now understand sub-recipient agreement. The recipient is actually the city of Springfield.
Yes.
And then we sub it out, subcontract it out, if you will, to these organizations and agencies. Thus, it's called a sub-recipient agreement.
Yes. So again, we put out various R F Ps throughout the year for people to submit proposals to carry out the work that is allowed under the C D B G program.
My other question is, given the uncertainties around this, have we provided an escape hatch for us in these contracts that if we don't receive the money from the federal government, we can get out of these contracts?
Yes, Commissioner. So all of our contracts, specifically federal, but you know, even looking at our state funds, we are making sure that we're putting in language that if for some reason the funding goes away or is changed our allocation, that then the contracts would be impacted by that.
Thank you very much.
Comments from commissioners on first readings? Comments from the audience on first readings? You go to the microphone, please.
I want to make sure there's a couple of points, I'll do a couple. I want to speak on two, one, three dash two, five. And I want to speak on two, one, four dash two, five. Do I need to speak on all those right now? Or are they gonna?
We will move on to second reading. So this is first readings only, so this is a time to bring it up. Thank you, Baron.
The, thank you. The. See.
C B G. Took me two years to say it right.
Yeah, C D B G Public Services. That we're using this federal money, we've established that. Thank you, Dr. Estrop. It's being allotted by someone who put a bid in and they were awarded it. Okay, we won't need to mention any names just yet. I would like to know what eighty-nine thousand one hundred dollars going to Sheltered Inc. What are these public services that they're providing?
Yes, the entire copy of the sub-recipient agreement is part of the legislation. I can certainly provide you a copy of that.
Can you give me the clip notes?
Be able to speak to that, Steve.
Is it going for salaries? That's what I'm.
Just remember that these grants are submitted according to a certain structure and how they're going to be approved. It's like you could submit a request for a grant and it has to meet certain criteria before it's actually approved along the federal guidelines that we have to distribute these monies. Am I right about that, Katie? Okay, good. Go ahead.
Yeah, so this particular award is primarily to go to salaries. It includes part-time to full-time fiscal manager position as well as a new case manager. All that's going to be related to providing homelessness outreach and services.
So also want to provide some additional clarification there. When we talk about salaries, when we are reimbursing Sheltered or any of our partners through our sub-recipient agreement, they are required to submit significant documentation that allocates each hour that they've worked and what project that they worked on. So we only reimburse actuals. We're not providing an actual salary for an individual.
They're very good at.
But I mean, just to be clear, is every agency has to be accountable for every dollar they're given through these grants. This is, it's not just loose spending and loose funding. It can't be because we pass audits on an annual basis that proves this. And these agencies are supposed to pass audit and have to pass audits as well. So it's a reimbursement for things that we have seen, that the staff has seen that line up with exactly what it needs to. If it doesn't, then they don't get the money. And that's happened in the past, Baron.
And I can tell you, most of these requests actually, they requested much more than that they're receiving because we went through line item by line item and look, what was eligible under Community Development Block Grant?
That was my next, my next thing. Thank you for saying that, Brian. They were eligible for up to, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but they were only approved for eighty-nine thousand one hundred. But the grant was way more. Am I correct?
Well, we receive annually about two million dollars in Community Development Block Grant. And we put out, we put out different R F Ps throughout the year for agencies to submit proposals to. And then we look at what those proposals, what are eligible expenses under those proposals? What fit under our action plan and so forth and make those decisions about what the actual award is. And again, as Katie mentioned, they are only reimbursed. These are reimbursement grants. So we're not just giving them eighty-nine one and saying, here you go, hope you spend it right. They have to document and show how they use the money. And then they are also responsible for adhering to audit standards as well.
Adding there for that public services, which we're talking about in awarding these grants, that's limited to fifteen percent of that C D B G allocation annually. HUD restricts that. The federal government restricts what we can spend on public services to fifteen percent of that grant award, which is why you don't see that full two million dollars being awarded tonight.
Sure. And I'm, trust me, I'm learning more and more about all that and the red tape and the legalism. Unfortunately, a grassroots organization such as the one I run, and you're all familiar with it, I don't, I'm not a big enough fish to swim in that pond, you know, with the insurances and all the red tape. You know, I don't, I can't hire attorneys to, you know, do contracts and things like that. And that's, I'm not aggravated.
Respectfully, Baron, this is, that's the only type of organization any municipality, any government can fund. Is an organization that has all these eyes and all this red tape, okay? The stuff you don't like to hear about. And that's, and every dollar that comes from the feds to municipality that goes to an organization has a big, long string of red tape attached to it. And that organization that receives it has to provide this documentation back.
Absolutely.
So I think we're good. Let's go on to the next point. I know you have more to say. Okay?
Well, I mean, you kind of answered my question right there, all with, with, with the C D B G funding. I mean, I get it. I'm learning, I'm learning about it. It's a very complex thing. And.
That's why it's an entire staff that oversees it.
And I wish, Baron, I'll say, I wish the federal government would make it easier to use those dollars for organizations, but they don't. But I also want to say, you look at an organization like Sheltered. If you recall, they originally started as Interfaith Hospitality Network, which was a very small grassroots organization. And over the years, they were able to grow and develop and become a larger organization that applied for that.
In my personal opinion, and become less and less and less concerned about homeless people.
Well, that's, okay, let's stick to the issue. Stick to the issue.
Okay.
Is there anything else on first readings?
Yes.
Also, I would look up C B D G funding, United States Grants. And you can read it all day long and for hours at home and not here. What's your next question?
Lots, lots.
Timing, you got three minutes for the whole night.
Two, 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 dash, two, one, authorizing Rumpke.
Okay.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
That thirty-five thousand dollars, that's for the trash cans here at City Hall.
All city facilities.
All city facilities.
Around the city.
Is there a reason? Is that something that's opened up to bid?
Lowest and best bid, every city contract. Lowest and best bid, every city contract.
Yep, and this is the last year of the renewal. And so next year, we'll be putting out for bid for any organization that wants to bid on our trash hauling services.
This is me, just as a Springfield guy. I would encourage, and I'm going to call every one of them that's a local within the city to have them submit a bid on that. I just wanted, I wanted to go on the record and find out what that was.
Absolutely. We're going to go on to second readings, Baron. Thank you. Your times, you've had over three minutes on first readings.
Well, there's.
Thank you, sir. We'll go on to second readings.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation for the purchase of liquid chlorine for use by the city's water treatment plant for an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-three thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, other comments from commissioners, from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming and approving the execution of a grant agreement for an Ohio Tech Pred Grant through the Ohio Department of Development in an amount up to thirty thousand dollars and authorizing the city manager, director of finance, and law director to perform all acts and execute all documents considered necessary to fulfill the city's obligation under said grant agreement and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, other comments from commissioners, from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming and approving an amendment to the grant agreement with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Home Investment Partnership American Rescue Plan Grant to accept additional funds in an amount not to exceed two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars for a total grant amount not to exceed one million eight hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred four dollars and authorizing the city manager, law director, and finance director to do all things necessary for the execution of the amendment to the grant agreement and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, other comments from commissioners, Dr. Estrop?
I was wondering, Mr. Heckafew or another staff member, might give us a little more information about what these funds are used?
Yeah, so specifically Home ARP, which was the American Rescue Plan Act. These were additional dollars that came out from the federal government for communities like Springfield. Again, we are in a entitlement home community. And so we got an additional allocation because of the American Rescue Plan Act. And a lot of times we utilize our home dollars to invest in affordable housing projects in our community. Great example is what just happened on Clifton Court and Neighborhood Housing Partnership and so forth. This specific item, there was actually HUD approached us that there was additional money that was supposed to come to us, two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine. So this is again, kind of bank air in our favor, so.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city of Springfield, Ohio to become a power, a clean future Ohio community.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, other comments from commissioners, from the audience? Diane Daniels?
Believe me, I will go ahead and make sure that I come up to speed on what this is all about. I'm here to just make my stand perfectly clear that solar projects on farmland are an anathema to everything that I stand for. So if this has anything to do with forwarding that agenda, I'm totally against it. If you want to put your solar panels on your house, that's your prerogative. I'm hoping that that's not it.
Basal Fett, thank you for allowing me to speak. And I would like to lend my support, as well as the Clark County Solar Alliance's support, to getting in the power of Clean Future Ohio. Thank you very much for looking forward. And hopefully this will bring us a lot of good, positive things for the city of Springfield and lower energy costs. We need lots of energy and this will be a great thing. Thank you.
Yes, I also just wanted to speak on this. Ms. Daniels, if you read the resolution, there's nothing about solar in the resolution. I would be happy to answer your questions. There's nothing about solar panels in the county on farmland, not about this. But this organization does have the ability to help us lower costs down the road when we do replace things, which we should be looking at as electricity costs continue to rise. They also have the option to potentially help us with streetlights around the city.
If.
I appreciate the timing of this. It couldn't be better. We are facing a substantial increase as a community in our street lighting because of the increase from Ohio Edison. Right now, they're a monopoly. They also, in case you don't know, are responsible for repairing and replacing all streetlights. So when a tree falls down and takes out a streetlight, you should be calling Ohio Edison, not the city, by and large. We need to look for opportunities for competition so that in fact, we can operate in a competitive environment that will drive down costs and save you, the taxpayers of this city, some money. To not seek help to do this would be foolish, in my humble estimation. We need help. We need advice. We need to look at alternatives that will lower the cost of paying for particularly street lighting. And Brian, how big is that bill? Or Chris, how big is that bill a year?
Three quarters of a million dollars.
Three quarters of a million dollars for the streetlights in this community. And it's going up. So yes, we need to look at alternatives because all of you, through your tax dollars, are paying for those costs. So I will support this proudly because we need to look at other options to bring down costs of providing the street lighting in this community and other costs incurred by the city. Thank you.
Other comments? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Next, our emergency ordinances require four votes to pass a majority.
Providing for supplemental appropriations within various funds and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, comments from commissioners?
Yes.
Can you again describe what a supplemental appropriation is?
Certainly. So supplemental appropriations adjust the budget both up and down during the year to account for changes from the original appropriation or the budget that commission reviews and approves near the end of each year for the following year.
Does it matter on how much it is or?
Does not matter. It could be a dollar increase or a ten thousand dollar decrease. All of those adjustments to budget come before commission.
Okay, when we look at the description of the supplemental appropriations from the general fund, there's several of them, like the city commission clerk has other services, total city commission clerk, twenty-one thousand. Like, because it just says other services, can we get a better description of some of these that have just other services?
Certainly. So the way the city budget, which is required by the state auditor and Ohio revised code, is by fund, department, and then personnel services, which would be all of our salary-related costs and other services, which encompasses everything else. The specific one that you mentioned for the city clerk is related to that mailing that we talked about earlier tonight in answering one of the questions. It's related to the charter change. That was not budgeted, so we are asking commission for supplemental appropriations for that.
And the second one, city manager's office, personnel services?
So these are related to payouts of vacation and sick leave as we approach the end of the year as well. And then additionally, in the general fund, the additional ones that you are going to see in other services are going to be related to our annual insurance cost, which commission approved several meetings ago. And if you'll recall, that was roughly a twenty percent increase in cost back to the department.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming purchases and the obtaining of services for the city and providing for payments therefore and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, other comments from commissioners, from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming and approving the execution of amendment number two to the grant agreement with the Federal Transit Administration to increase grant funding in an amount not to exceed one million three hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred seven dollars for operating preventative maintenance and ADA paratransit activities, authorizing an additional local matching expenditure in an amount not to exceed five hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars, authorizing the city manager, law director, and director of finance to perform all acts and execute all documents they consider necessary to fulfill the city's obligations under said grant amendment and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, could you explain this in greater detail for us, please?
Certainly.
Or simpler detail?
So this amendment applies to our twenty-twenty-three F T A Federal Transit Administration grant. F T A prefers that we actually enter into amendments with them instead of entering into a new grant each year. The funding here has remained consistent. a new grant each year. The funding here has remained consistent. So essentially, what this is funding is our transit within the community. So previously, that was Springfield City Area Transit, or SCAT. As you know, now that is field trip. So this federal funding will be used to fund that. If we look back at 2024 to how transit was funded, that mix of dollars, 67% was federal funding from FTA, 14% was from state funding, 12% was from local support, which is our, the city's general fund. 7% was from other revenues such as the fares that we received for operating that service.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Estrop.
So based on the information you just supplied to us, absent federal or state funding, and state funding, the city would not have the resources to operate any kind of mass transit system?
That is correct, Commissioner.
No city.
No.
Yeah. Let me be clear. No city could operate mass transit without federal funding.
Absolutely. I think that's very important because we're not sure where that funding is either at the federal level.
Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming and approving change order number two to the contract between the city and Brumbоль Construction Incorporated for the construction of a new fire station to be located on North Thompson Avenue to increase the contract in an amount not to exceed $32,516 for a total amount not to exceed $5,137,304, authorizing the city manager to execute said change order number two and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
The, by and large, the cost of this fire station came from federal money that we received, correct?
About 50% of it came from ARPA dollars and then the other, we did finance through bond financing.
Oh, thank you.
Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming and approving the execution of an airport improvement program grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration in an amount up to $1,694,253, authorizing expenditure of up to $89,171.18 to be used as local matching funds, authorizing the city manager, law director, airport manager, and the director of finance to do all things necessary for the execution of the agreement and to comply with all relevant local, state, and federal legal requirements and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
I think it's important for us to look at the Springfield Beckley Airport as an asset for us, not only in terms of employment, but also economic development. And because it's more than just a place for general aviation, certainly that's part of it. But we also have an Air National Guard unit out there. We now have the National Center for Excellence in the drone technology. We have some private businesses out there, some repair service. So I see this as a great opportunity for us to spend some money, but to almost get a triple return on it to improve an asset that I think will only continue to grow for this community. Thank you.
Comments from the audience? Wes?
I see this as an opportunity to speak about community development, economic development for our community. This, along with other activities that are going, ongoing in terms of development, economic development, is really important. I was just out there today, drove around out there and you could see the, the research and development program that's going on. And there are other places in this community where there is significant investment. Speaking to the importance of access for our community, finding ways to open the doors for those who have not been included in a lot of the opportunities that are, we're seeing is really, really an important piece. And I hope that we're finding ways, speaking with regard to what we've heard earlier about how do we, how do we include? How do we understand? How do we listen to people who would benefit from being involved in, in these economic development possibilities and opportunities? So I affirm the, the use that, you know, this, this funding and all, it's a fantastic thing, but it's only if it helps everybody. It's, we got to figure out ways so this includes everyone in our community has opportunities.
Community development is like we talked about, the different abatements. It is a comprehensive plan, which means this helps the entire development of the entire community. So it may not hit every segment of the community, but it is part of the development of the community. Dr. Estrop?
To your point, I'm pleased to report that schools, K-12 school district, are adopting this as a career path. I'm particularly familiar with the Global Impact STEM Academy, which has AgBio science as one trend, but also now a new trend associated with the whole drone technology and the marrying, frankly, of those two career paths. So I think, I'm just very pleased that the schools are seeing the wisdom of providing education to our children that will serve as a pipeline for what hopefully will be homegrown industries.
I hear that. I appreciate it. I think, and I affirm it, I also say that there are, there are students in our district, there are families that do not understand the opportunity that's there, and we need to find ways to be sure that we've communicated that and open those doors for kids and family for the future.
One of the things that does happen is there's an eighth grade job fair, and they continue to move that, I think even to a lower level, maybe seventh grade. But the Greater Partnership does a very good job, Amy Donahue within there, does a very good job of reaching out to the entire community and, I forget her name, I'm so sorry, and Caitlin reaches every school and goes to every school and hand delivers internship opportunities. We had an intern this summer and other companies had an intern. So there is an agency that's really reaching out to all over the community. Ms. Tackett, you have any?
Yeah, and I can testify. My son took the unmanned aircraft class at STEM and, you know, his path is the Navy and he's hoping to get involved in drones that way. I know that there's field trips out at the airport all the time trying to expose kids to what's happening out there. So, yeah.
I'm not being critical.
No, I hear what you're saying. But I think it was important to also mention what is happening and pretty much what you're asking to make sure it happens. Thank you. Other comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with performance site development for the reconstruction of taxiway C at the Springfield Beckley Municipal Airport for an amount not to exceed $1,600, excuse me, $1,600,234.18 and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commission from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Thank you for coming.